Hello Minnesota, welcome back. This is the Tony Hernandez Show. I'm your host, Tony Hernandez. Today is Saturday, June 15th. It's a hot and humid one in St. Paul, Minnesota. Finally, we've all been waiting for this hot weather, but too bad it's raining. And of course, right when I pull up to the studio, it just starts pouring. But that's life in Minnesota, so be it. We have a great show today. I'm super, super excited about our guests that we have on. We have a DFL endorsed St. Paul School Board candidate, Mr. Chu Vu. And I'll bring him on right now. Chu, thank you so much for being on the show.
Well, thank you for inviting me, Tony. It's an honor to be here and it's an honor to be invited here, so thank you.
I must say, congratulations on earning the DFL endorsement. When was the convention? Was it last week?
The convention was last week and it's an humble experience for me to be endorsed by the DFL. You know, it's a voter conference from my peers and I take that seriously and I want to do my best to earn their trust.
Well, we had one of the school board candidates on, one of our first shows actually, Mr. David Martinez. And you know, he's a friend of mine as well. Can you talk a little bit about his candidacy? We were pretty excited about his...
Well, you know, the first time I met Dave was at that Senate District 64 Committee meeting back in early April. And you know, when I met Dave, I liked him. He and I talked for a little bit and I think he has a bright future. I think he has a lot of commitment, a lot of passion and tried to give back to the community. And I wish him well.
Yeah, you know, and that's the one thing that my first impression of David Martinez was that he truly cares and he's a community activist, he's a community person. And you know, he really had that passion, like you said, to make the school board and the schools of St. Paul better and stronger. But you know, the purpose of having you here is I want to introduce you to the St. Paul audience, to Washington County as well. I went on your website. Your website is chuforeschoolboard.com. And you know, the first thing that struck me was it says that you are a refugee immigrant. And can you tell a little more about your story with that?
Well, Tony, you know, I think with a lot of, you know, a lot of people in the metro area here, we have a lot of refugees here. I'm just one of them. Now, I came here in the early eighties when I was 10 years old, from Laos. Actually, I came from Laos to Thailand, stayed in the refugee camp there for about a year before coming into this country at the age of 10. And you know, as you read in my website too, I did not have any education prior to that. So, public school has been kind to me. I think some of the teachers I met along the way had been kind to me. And I know how important education is to our kids. And I know, you know, St. Paul now has a very diverse community. And the reason I run is because I wanted to see what I can do to help St. Paul be a better city. Because we have 76% of student colors in the St. Paul district. And I think, you know, a lot of our student colors are still not doing well. A lot of them are struggling financially, the families. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of factors that played into why they're not doing well. And you know, I think with my experience, with my background, you know, coming from, you know, a background where, you know, I really started with nothing. Having to go through the education, probably education with really nothing because my parents were not educated either. They did not have nice jobs. You know, we're struggling financially as well. And I was able to make it and I want to, I think that that perspective is important and it could be valuable when we sit on the school board to decide the future for our kids in the district.
Well, I wanted to ask you a little more about your personal experience going back to your childhood. You said that you're a product of the public schools. And so, you came here at a young age. I'm taking it you probably didn't know English too well when you first came to America. And can you talk about the struggles in public education, not having English as your native language? And then also, I want to hear about some of your ideas to help immigrant students adapt to the St. Paul schools.
Well, you know, I came, we, my first stop in the US is in Dallas, Texas. You know, over there, we lived in a project neighborhood where there's a lot of African-American. You know, I really, you know, I did not have any education prior to that, any, never been in a classroom before that. And so, I did not speak any English, did not write or read any other language. You know, I think for the first year there, practically, I was basically just thrown in the classroom and really didn't do much. Basically, just observe and, you know, unlike the community up here where I think they recognize they have a lot of refugees, they have a lot of immigrants and they were able to, you know, try to help those immigrants. I think down south, there's only a few of us and they didn't really know what to do with us. So, it was a struggle initially for me, for my family, for my friends. But then we moved to Oklahoma. And I think we have some of the teachers that were really caring. Some of the teachers are really, really taken upon themselves to try to help us, you know. And I learned a lot, you know, in elementary school down there in Oklahoma. You know, I think the one-on-one, the personal attention, you know, I still remember, you know, that they were putting, you know, like four or five of us kids together in a table where the teacher would sit right there. You know, we would sit right next to the teacher, we'd just go and read over books or do a math problem together. You know, and I think those finally pay off for me. I think, you know, when we finally moved up to Wisconsin in 85, I was, you know, so advanced. I was more advanced than a lot of my peers, among peers, our refugee peers up here, that I did not have to attend second, English as a second language class. You know, I was attending the regular classes. So, you know, that, my experience, I think it was the, you know, it was hard early on, but I think it was due to the effort of teachers and administrators that make sure that we have that personal, you know, personal instructions that slowly helped me catch up to the regular class.
So, you moved to Wisconsin in 1985. When did you end up in Minnesota?
Well, after, after high school in La Crosse, Wisconsin, I came to Saint Olaf College. So, that was back in 1987, 88. And I've been in Minnesota since then. Went back to Wisconsin after I finished with my schooling and worked there as a chemist for about 11 years before I decided to go back to law school. And I graduated from law school in 2006, December, and became an attorney and been practicing law since then.
Nice. So, do you have a family here?
I have, yes. I'm married, I have five kids. One is already 20 years old. He just finished his sophomore year at the U. You know, I have three of them in the same public school right now. One, a junior at Harding High School.
Okay.
And two, kindergarteners at, you know, Dayton Bluff Elementary. You know, I have a four-month-old, so that's, I have still a lot of kids.
Going to keep you pretty busy with the campaign?
I'm still heavily invested in the St. Paul Public School. I want St. Paul Public School to treat them well. So, I have a personal stake in making sure that our parents' voice, especially our economically disadvantaged parents, you know, because I come from that background and that their voices are heard on the St. Paul Public School.
Well, we've had, when we had David Martinez on and also a gentleman by the name of Donald Benner, he wrote a book called Ways to Close In on the Achievement Gap. And it's something that, you know, as a Hispanic-American living in Minnesota, there are certain alarms that I have with the Twin Cities school districts. And if you specifically look at African-American students in the Twin Cities and Hispanic-American students in the Twin Cities, you'll see a big achievement gap between them and their white Anglo counterparts. It's actually one of the largest achievement gaps in the entire nation. And do you have any ideas how to solve that? How to reduce the achievement gap so that more Hispanics and more African-Americans are graduating from high school and they're going to have the skill sets to go on to college and get good jobs when they graduate?
Well, Tony, I just want to correct you. Well, I just want to add to what you said too. I mean, I know that Asian-Americans are traditionally doing really well in the school and there is no achievement problem. But if you look, if you, you know, desegregate those data further, you will see that Mauk Americans are really performing poorly as well. I think if you look at the district data, that our Mauk American students are, you know, our MCA test, for example, is one of the lowest in the state. You know, and given that, you know, the state isn't doing too great versus the nation, you know, that means our Mauk kids are not doing that great either. So, that is certainly something that, and we do have a huge Asian-American population in St. Paul. Most of those are Mauk Americans. And I'm not saying that I'm here because of Mauk Americans. I'm here because I think I'm concerned about, you know, our African-American kids, our Hispanic kids, our Mauk kids, our kids that's not performing well. I think I do have, because I come from that background, that I do have a connection. I do have some sort of a perspective that I believe that could be useful. You know, I know that with the achievement gap, you know, there's a lot of experts. There's a lot of, you know, people that, you know, understudied this issue. I think we just have to try. We have to look at some of the, what has been working and we have to try. We know what has been working in other parts of the country.
Can you expand out a little more? What is working?
Well, I, you know, and some of the things that are working, for example, even in my own personal experience, I think when teachers challenge you and they give you a challenging curriculum, that'd help, that'd push you further. I mean, you know, without teacher pushing me and giving me a curriculum that is challenging, that I would not be doing as well as I did. I think the expert has been saying that this does help. You know, I think kids that would, that have, that needed extra help, we do have to give them that extra help. And like my own experience, you know, teachers knew that I was not catching up, that I needed extra help. And so, they were able to, they devised ways to help me and some of my friends, you know, to try to catch up. You know, I think these are some of the things that we could do. These are some of the things that experts says we could do. Certainly, I know that we also want to motivate teachers, you know, to try to motivate kids. And I think our teachers are our biggest asset in the district. We want to treat them well. But we got to also make sure that they understand that they're the one that we are counting on to help our kids succeed. So, I think we have to work with our teachers to make sure that they are motivating our kids, you know, and that they, you know, and that we got to make sure that they are, you know, we got to take care of them as well.
Well, you know, one issue too is that I've read about or hear from teachers talking about ways to improve classroom participation and also achievement is to get parents involved. I think that the studies show that the more that a parent is involved in their child's education, making sure they're doing their homework, reading with their kids, doing those types of activities, those kids ultimately have a much, much higher percentage of success in the classroom and post-graduation. Do you have any ideas as to how to get parents to become more involved? Is there anything the school board can do about that?
Well, I don't know what the school board can do about that. But certainly, the experts are saying, you know, you know, community involvement, parent involvement, investment in their kids' education does help. But I think personally, even my kids, even my parents who did not know English, they were encouraging me to take school seriously. I think that kind of just involvement help a lot, you know. And certainly, that is something that I feel that I could contribute as well as an ambassador to try to get parents to be more involved. I've already talked to some of the Mauk parent, some of the parent groups. I wanted to have a relationship with them. I wanted to make sure what some of their concerns are. I want to make sure that we reach out to them to make sure they invest in their kids. Because education is pretty, very important. So, definitely, that is something that is an integral, important component in trying to get our, close the achievement gap in our district. So, yeah, our parent involvement is definitely very important.
Nice. Well, we're almost coming to the end of the time here, but I do thank you for coming on. And I wanted to give you the next 30 seconds to a minute to talk to the audience, explain a little more about who you are, what your website is, how people can get in contact with you if they want to help your campaign, how are they able to do that?
Okay. Well, you know, I'm really excited to be running for St. Paul School Board. I believe that I can bring a different perspective to the district. And because of my background, my experience, you know, I'm, you know, I came as an immigrant. I, you know, succeeded through, you know, property education, went to college, became a chemist for 11 years for the US government and decided to go back to school, became a lawyer, and been practicing law for the last six years. I, you know, I know that education is very important. That's why I'm running and I'm counting on your support. Anybody that lives in St. Paul, you know, I will love to get your support. You know, please contact me at my website at www.chuforeschoolboard.com. If you have any questions, please give me a call. If you can volunteer, please give me a call. I would love to talk to you, I'd love to earn your trust, I would love to get your support.
Chu Vu, thank you very much for coming on the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
All right. And that's again, Chu Vu's website is www.chuforeschoolboard.com. That's chu, C-H-U-E, for schoolboard.com. He's running for the St. Paul School Board, DFL endorsed, recently endorsed. We're definitely excited to have him on and we hope that Chu will come on the show as the campaign progresses to explain a little more about his position. So, we're going to play a quick video here. It was an incident that occurred during game three of the San Antonio Spurs game. They had a young Mexican-American little boy sing the National Anthem because at the last second, the person who was supposed to do it ended up canceling. And so, they called this little boy Sebastian de la Cruz to sing the National Anthem. He was also on the American Idol. But there was an enormous backlash to this kid. And you know, people on Twitter and on Facebook, it actually went viral, caught a lot of people's attention. They were tweeting and Facebooking racist, you know, things about this particular boy. And, but we wanted to just play this quick clip and we'll put it up right now.
It wasn't planned that Sebastian de la Cruz would sing the anthem at last night's game three, but he was brought in when Darius Rucker couldn't get to the game in time. Sebastian first captured hearts on America's Got Talent. The 11-year-old San Antonio native also impressed the NBA.
When we went to the AT&T Center, he called and he said, "Oh, well, you're doing the National Anthem." And my dad turned around and was like, "Yes."
And he planned to use his talent to wish the Spurs luck.
It was amazing. And if you look back on the video at the end, I went like that. That was just, I don't know, it was just, it was just something I felt. And part of it was giving the Spurs, you know, luck.
Although the Spurs did win, people posting racially charged tweets about Sebastian tried to ruin the night. One guy tweeted this about Sebastian. Nine out of 10 chance that kid singing the National Anthem is illegal. Another guy said, "This kid is Mexican. Why is he singing the National Anthem?" And they got worse.
I knew there was going to be a lot of...
But this talented young singer didn't pay any attention to the social media storm.
I knew that one day when I sing, that people were going to judge me. And that, that's why I've, over the time that I've grown, I've learned that you don't really care what people say about you. It's what you think about yourself.
And we found tons of people on Facebook who have great things to say about Sebastian. Each of them praising the young singer.
So, that is the story of young Sebastian. And he was, you know, this went viral on Twitter and on Facebook. And you know, people just spewing out racial slurs and whatnot about this. And you know, there's just no place for this in America. This is an American boy. He is a full-fledged American. It's perfectly acceptable and it's perfectly American for an American boy to dress up in mariachi clothes, especially in San Antonio, Texas, and sing the National Anthem in such a beautiful manner as he did. And I will, to defend the San Antonio Spurs, the people were nothing more than supportive at the game. But it was actually outside of that in the social media and Twitter and Facebook where people just got plain old vicious. And you know, my main point of bringing this up is I just believe that as Americans and as a country, all of us just need to turn the chill volume up just a little bit. And for some people, they need to turn it way up. Because, you know, there's too much hateful rhetoric these days, there's too much division. And what America is, is the melting pot. It's people from all over, different countries. That is what made our country great is the immigrant. You know, we had the St. Paul School Board candidate Chu Vu. He's an immigrant here. And our next guest, Yazden, is an author and he's also an immigrant from Afghanistan. So, we'll bring on Yazden right now. Yazden, thank you so much for coming on the show.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
It's great to have you here. You sent me your book, You'll Be My Son, Joe. And I read it over the last couple of weeks here. It was good nighttime reading, you know, when I'd come home from a long day at work and, you know, read some. I couldn't believe some of the, just an absolutely incredible stories that page after page, you know, that are in here. And it's very well-written and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And you know, your writing makes me proud to be an American, makes me proud of our tradition of the immigrant. And I wanted to talk to you more about just the whole process of you writing this book. First of all, why did you write it?
Main reason really to share my story, you know, what's going on, where we come from, you know, and also my adopted father, he's nine years old. And my mother, of course, she gone, passed away. In fact, she was advising me to put my story in the book. And that was 20 years ago and she died in Africa. And that's, I make sure my father, you know, before he goes, seen it. That's the key. And also to raise awareness, you know, to the people in America see what's going on in that part of the world regarding, you know, my ethnics. And they still today suffering just exactly was when I was there, 40 years ago.
That was the first thing that caught my eye. You know, you start out talking about being a young boy in Afghanistan and you didn't really paint the living there in too great of a light. And you talked often about how all you really wanted to do was escape Afghanistan. And at first, you wanted to go to Iran and then you went to other places. But can you talk about your memories of life in Afghanistan as a young boy?
Yes, I was, I remember when I was basically six or seven. Of course, I lost my mother, I was very young, I didn't remember much of her. And usually, what we called the Hazara, they have many different ethnics in Afghanistan. And we were one of the most prosecuted ethnic group in Afghanistan. The reason, because we don't look like what these Afghans supposedly look or we don't worship the way it does. That's one thing. And also, we believe in woman's right, you know. They're basically part of us. And what the challenge was here, we called the Hazara Jod, which is right in the center, in the middle of Afghanistan. And most, every year, it's the springtime, they call Kuchi. Used to come from Pakistan, most of it, to, in the winter, go to Pakistan, summer, come our area. Basically, they take whatever we have, the animals or sometimes force us to give whatever food we have. But anyway, also, they bring goods from Pakistan or any other where they put into our house. Basically, my father, "Okay, I want you to have this and sell it. When I come back next year, I want this amount of money. If you don't, I'm going to take you or kill you or what, you know."
Wow. That's one other thing that really stuck out to me is all the different jobs and different jobs that you did before the age of 15. Can you talk about some of those jobs that you worked when you were younger?
Absolutely, you know. When I, when my, we escaped basically to leave, excuse me, the Hazara Jod, the village area, to go to Kabul. And that was my, really, I was about eight years old. I worked with this family and that's what happened when they took me to a movie and I saw a movie about Iran, how pretty, how beautiful it was. And that's, my goal was to get out there. And the main thing, I worked a lot of time with the foreigners because I was hoping one of those to take me with them because it was not for me in Afghanistan because of very, you know, pretty soon they're going to send us to military or slavery somewhere, yeah. I worked, you know, I escaped from Afghanistan when I was about 15, not quite 16. I end up in Iran. And then I stay in Iran, of course, I couldn't work and because I have no work permit. But I used to help to go from Afghanistan, excuse me, Iran to Iraq and get, take some goods from, to sell to make enough money to pay for my trip. And then I'm back and also, I was always so very wary to, they're going to find me, send me back to Afghanistan, which is, I would not interest to go back.
You know, that's what I noticed a lot is that your jobs that you were doing were a lot of jobs that required entrepreneurial skills.
Yes.
Lots of sales types activities, you know, lots of transition of goods and whatnot.
That's absolutely, yeah.
Was it, was it, were you unique in terms of like your desire to want to get out there and work hard to earn your living and to save money to achieve your dream? Or was that pretty much the norm where you were from?
Basically, you know, that's our nature in the Hazara group. They're very proud of people, they like to work and that's how my ethnic did. Then when I end up in Lebanon, of course, I working exactly, I had three jobs. One is I was working is an antique store, you know, and tried to serve coffee and also I had to teach karate. And I tried to attract tourists and tried to sell them. In fact, I used to speak Spanish few words because when they came in, I have to count how many that thing worth, yes. That's the work ethic of our nation, I believe. That's the only reason we can survive to work. If I don't, we're not going to survive.
Interesting. And then the other, the other part that I was pretty interested in was when you met your adoptive parents. And can you talk about what were they doing in the Middle East, first of all?
Well, I'm sure you saw some of those pictures, but my father was a professor at University of Minnesota, which is I'm talking about now, then it was Simkins, Mr. Smith and Simkins. And he was working for United Nations, help the farmers to grow sunflowers, potatoes, not grow hashish. Basically, the Baca Valley grow a lot of hashish. At the same time, when he came, he came in the first year and there was no war. But when he brought his family, and the civil war started in Lebanon. And also, his life was very dangerous over there because there was about 80% of the population that there was the smugglers. And that's, he came to that antique store, that's how I met him, you know. Then I asked him if he can give me a job also because I wanted to, wasn't enough money I make. Then that's how we really become talking, communicating. Then he come to United States for Christmas here. I mean, the first time, then he brought his family. Then we become his family. Also, when he came to United States, he gave me a job to American Embassy to basically spy on the smugglers for about three months.
And then you, you wrote about how you were gathering samples of the drugs, right?
Yes, yes.
Illegal drugs. What would you do? Grab some off a plant and put it in your pocket?
No, that was very, because they made the opium. Because the biggest thing was the, the embassy want to know if they're really producing opium over there. That's the biggest job they gave me. In fact, the first time I went, they gave me about $100. You know, that was a great money and that was them. Then I brought a sample, they gave me over, which was not cooked ready yet, the opium. Then they give me about $300. When I took, I was sitting in the house, the guy was cooking in there, right? Put in the bowl and took it to the embassy, they give me $500.
Wow.
That was, I thought that was the richest man in Lebanon, yes. That's how I took the sample. But when Mrs. Simkins come in and Mr. Simkins says, told about where my job was and I believe she says, "You better get this kid out, otherwise you're going to get killed." She really get me out of that place.
Wow, well, yeah, I mean, it's... Wow, well, yeah, I mean, it seems like, it seems like a pretty dangerous times that you had at certain points. You were actually, for your adoptive father, you were actually hired to be his bodyguard. And we're gonna pull up a picture here that shows Yazdan right here, here he is. Can you talk a little bit about what we see in this picture?
Yes, that's their house, they show in the back, yes. When the war gets, civil war gets so bad, there when the Bakka Valley, only American was in there, yes. They came attack a few nights. In fact, I was guarding also, we have another guard because we switch at night especially. And in the daytime, I have a double-barrel shotgun and in the night, we have a machine guns. And one night they came in, they attack, it wasn't after me, it was my adopted parents. And tried to shoot right through the door, two bullets went through right to the house, you know? In fact, my adopted father's secretary said that he was in the Marine. He said, because when he was fighting with the door and he shut the door, he right jumped the other side of the door. And the two other was one bullet go right here, one up here, you know? He's Marine thinking, save his life. And absolutely, they were stuck in Bakka Valley and for about two months.
Wow.
Then what happened, we finally made it with my, I have another bullet coming. We went to Beirut and we stuck in Beirut for almost a week, week and a half, if it was not more. And for four days, we eat carrots. That hotel was no any other foreign except us.
Wow, well, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah, then the only, here I was, we were calling the American Embassy, we were calling United Nations to help us to get out there, which is my father, you know, was no help. And I was 19 years old. I, I'm the one, I had to make the decision to how to save Mr. and Mrs. and daughter out of Beirut to airport. That's the only place was safe was, yes. I did manage, got a taxi and I had a car, I drove front of them, the escort. When we were leaving from the hotel to take off from Beirut, usually car bumper to bumper to through the airport. We never see one car, but it was just shooting us, like, I mean, bullets everywhere, yes. We end up in the airport, then we, about eight hours, with his diplomatic, he finally got a tickets to go to Damascus. When Tony, when we left, and most of people sent alley in the plane because it was so full. Kids crying and screaming and we, in the air, the Beirut was burning, yeah. And we landed in Damascus. And that time, Mrs. Simkins grabbed me, she said she named me, you will be my son Joe.
That's how, that's how you got the name of the book here. Can we put up the image that we have here? So can you talk about, so that's how you came up with the book, is your adoptive mother?
Exactly.
Said, you'll be my son Joe.
Yes, she grabbed me, hugged me, she said to you will be my son Joe because I have a brother's name is John now, I have brother's name is George and I was, I become a son Joe, that's why I picked that name, yes.
Wow. And can you talk, we see in this image that everybody's seen right now is you standing on top of the camel and on the front page of the book, you have the camel there too. Is there any significance to this camel?
Well, my job was to always got tried to bring, I was always hoping to, the guy keep me as, to not fire me for I'm not producing enough. When the tourists passing by the road, I just jump in, stand on the top of camel and wave to get all the tourists come in to buy antiques or take a picture because we charge them fee when you ride the camel, taking picture, yes. That was my main job was, yeah.
Did you ever have one of those things, don't they spit in your face sometimes?
No, no, that never happened. It was that, I practiced for about maybe three weeks to how to, because the camel stand, I have to run to jump right and step on the top of it because by the time you get him down and it's stuff, that was too late, the tourists already was gone.
Wow, wow. Well, we're almost out of our time, but I wanna hear more about your first experience coming into America. I think it was in 1975 is the first.
Yeah, exactly, I came in '75 and then I had to go back because I had a tourist visa.
So where do you go, was it New York City or?
I went to New York, I went to Europe, Italy, then I went back to Syria. But the reason was I went back to Syria because my father was hoping to go back to Lebanon to work. Of course, the war get worse, you know? Then we also, my mother took everything stuff from here to Lebanon and we left everything, including the pictures, goods from their families and stuff. And I went, they would not allow me to go there and talk with my parents. But I went because I wanna bring what the goods was from my mother, which is almost get killed that time. They were in a three days battle with, I don't know who they were.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was interesting when you were writing in the book about your first time in America and how you went to the stores and you couldn't believe of the abundance you wrote about of all the stuff that you saw and...
Well, absolutely, I thought this is, this is the greatest country on planet earth, yes. It was not easy to become an American citizen, which is I'm proud of who I am today. Was, in fact, they were offer me, you know, when I, Russia invaded Afghanistan, become a refugee status, which is have all the right to get the welfare and stuff. I just, Tony, I was refused, I went to work, you know, and I really thanks God I did, yes.
Well, you know, one thing that I find is so admirable and I appreciate so much about the people who immigrate to this country and they become Americans is it seems like they have a different perspective on what freedom really means, what a democratic republic means. And can you just, for anyone out there who is a first generation, second generation immigrant, can you just talk about the experience of freedom in America and the difference between that and how you grew up in Afghanistan?
Well, you know, freedom, most of the young generation stuff, I usually explain to them, you know, see, I, you born here, you inherited the freedom, I earned it, yeah. That's the difference really you can understand because if you don't have freedom, you got nothing. I don't care, what do you have in the world, what do you have that? If you don't have the freedom, you have nothing. And that's, when I came here, I can do what I wanna do, what kind of job I wanna work, what kind of family I have, where I'm gonna live, that's called the freedom. And that's the only country in the world, they give you that, you know?
Nice.
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna give you the last 30 seconds here to tell the audience about how they can find your book, You'll Be My Son Joe, the website where they can perhaps buy it from and...
Yes, my website, it's by, for first time basically, Y-A-Z-D-A-N-B dot com. W-W-Y-A-Z-A-A-Y-A-Z-D-A-N-B dot com. This is my website. And also around local bookstores they can find, yes, and...
I'm sure you can go on Amazon.
Yes, also on Amazon. When you go, when you go to my website, you can find through Amazon, yes, you go through, I have a Facebook, yes.
Yeah, and that's how, that's how I found it, is I went to Google and I Googled your name Yazdan, Y-A-Z-D-A-N, and then I put in...
Yeah, B dot com, yeah.
Yep, yep. And well, thank you so much for coming on. And I encourage all the audience out here to check out his book, You'll Be My Son Joe. I read it, it's a fantastic read, incredible stories. Really makes me proud to be an American and makes me proud to have the rich immigrant traditions that we do here. So Yazdan...
I'll show you too, I was in the paper also, the Shirley paper and North Oaks paper.
Oh, nice.
Yes, I don't know if your camera can see there or not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there if you look there.
Well, thank you, thank you for having me.
Well, thank you Yazdan and I appreciate you coming on here. So, yeah, it's great to have Chu, the St. Paul's School Board candidate and Yazdan. Both of them are first-generation immigrants. It's just awesome to hear their experiences about coming to America. And it's also just incredible and so encouraging to see them making, making something of their citizenship here. They're improving this country, they're improving our communities, making our culture better. So I definitely thank author Yazdan Bach and also Chu Wu, St. Paul's School Board candidate. So we're gonna get on to some of the news and views that we like to talk about here on the Tony Hernandez Show. It's just been, the last three to four weeks has been pretty overwhelming when you think about all the different things that went on where I don't even know what to think anymore. And I don't even think the American people are able to focus and digest everything that's happening. But we're just gonna keep giving the information on the show, we're gonna keep the debate open and we're just gonna keep asking the questions because this is a very important time in American history and it's time that we all stand up. Because if we don't, we are in jeopardy of losing the great things that Yazdan was talking about, freedom and liberty, the things that have made America great over the generations, the things that have made us exceptional and distinguished us from the rest of the world. But before we get into that, I'm gonna bring on Jake Duesenberg, friend and host here. Jake, thanks for coming on again, it's great to see you. Your beard's looking pretty thick there. You preparing for something here?
What does that mean?
I don't know.
No, I just like the look, feels right.
It looks pretty rugged, what does Kirsten think about it, your wife?
She likes it, you know?
Doesn't she get like itchy if she ever gets close to you or does she just keep her distance from you these days?
Well, she really, she watches that show Duck Dynasty and she says, well, that's what I want my husband to look like. So I'm just trying to give her what she wants.
Well, we were, we were talking...
She doesn't watch this.
Yes, chances are she doesn't. So we were talking last week about the marathon, because Sam Pierce, who we're gonna be talking to in a little bit here, he just recently finished 26.2 miles, Lake Placid, New York. And that got us talking about the marathon and I got all pumped, I thought that we were gonna be running it and training for it together. And then you called me and you had a different idea. And, you know, both of us, you know, we, you know, struggle here and there, just like any other human being with our, with our weight and, you know, the amount of food and other things that we take into our body. And so it was your idea, you said, let me just, let you just talk about...
Well, I like marathons, it's cool, but the problem with a marathon is I was training for the, I think it's the Minneapolis Marathon?
The Twin Cities.
No, whatever the first one was.
Oh, there's a different one.
Yeah, I was training for that in June of last year and about a month prior to that, I strained my Achilles tendon. And lo and behold, I'm out 150 bucks or whatever it was and I can't compete. So when you mentioned this, I'm still having trouble with Achilles tendon, I'm trying to run, but I'm not doing stuff over six miles. And, you know, I think, you know, you could train for one event and you get injured and all of a sudden you're not competing in that event. Or we be honest with ourselves and think, why did we actually wanna do this? Was it to run the marathon or was it to lose weight? And so I asked you that question on the phone and your answer was?
Well, to be healthy and to run and, yeah, to look better and, you know?
So the better, the better way to do that is to have a friendly competition, raise a little bit of money for charities and lose a bunch of weight while we're at it. So I said, let's do our own Tony Hernandez Show Biggest Loser, where each week you and I do a weigh-in. And the person who wins, who has the largest percentage loss that week is the winner. And then the loser between us has to put $20 into a bucket. And what do we wanna do, 12, 14 weeks, something like that?
I think we said 14 weeks.
14 weeks?
We'll have a nice glass, little jar here, I think, for next week where we can put the $20 in.
So you'll put your $20 in next week?
Well, I pointed out to you on the phone when I talk, I think you have a little bit of an advantage here just being, you know, a little bigger and carrying a little more mass than me.
Is that the way of calling me fatter?
I wouldn't say fatter, I would say, what is it, more muscular?
I guess so.
More tissue?
I guess, but the numbers on our first weigh-in don't really lie, do they? I mean, Tony weighed in at 212.4. I thought you were gonna weigh in a little bit higher than that.
212, yep.
I'm 20 pounds heavier than that, I'm 232.8, I wrote 332, 232.8.
Hopefully you don't go up to 332 over the next 14 weeks. Trying to lose weight and you actually gain 100 pounds, that'd be good.
So I actually have to lose more poundage to get a higher percentage than you, but percentage is the big equalizer. So next week, and I'll be out of studio, so Friday morning we'll have to do this and we'll weigh in. And whoever loses that week puts the $20 in. But in the totality, at the end of this whole thing in 14 weeks, the person who's lost the biggest percentage weight gets to direct where those funds go. So my charity is Little Hearts Foundation, you can probably Bing or Google that. And that goes to families that are struggling with congenital heart disease of their youngest one, either a newborn that was born or one that's still in the womb.
Nice.
What's your charity?
You know, I'm gonna announce my charity next week when I put, when you put the $20 bill in, that's what I'm gonna say. Because I wanna do, I wanna do some research and find a really good charity, you know, so I can, I can think about it a little bit more.
It's probably irrelevant because it's gonna go to my charity anyhow after I win this competition.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best. And we should be clear, we're not gonna do any of this, you know, what wrestlers do in high school, you know, where they dehydrate themselves and spit, I'm not gonna do any of that.
Well, they do that actually on that show, I remember watching that show a couple of seasons ago. And each week they'll try to cut some water weight, you know, they play the game, so to speak, excuse me. And the way that we're gonna get by that is it's not what, it's not the percentage you lost last week, it's the percentage lost from your lowest weight. So if one week you actually gain weight, you actually are still gonna have to lose percentage from the lowest weight you've ever weighed in. So that's just the motivation for us not to play that kinda game.
So did you grow your beard to give you a little extra weight in our weigh-in today? So that next week, you can be totally shaved and...
He's already on my tricks, I ate a lot of pasta before this show, because I don't really think I weigh over 230, but certainly didn't go easy on the beard last night with the knowledge that we had this weigh-in today.
Oh, nice, nice.
But then again, you probably played that same trick, so I guess it's...
Well, I remember two weeks ago when I looked in the camera, I was like, oh, I'm gaining weight, like...
Oh, so you started then?
Well, I started running more, you know, and I started like watching a little bit more of what I eat. I kicked out my daily one beer that I like to drink when I get done with work, you know, I like to have one beer. I stopped doing that. And like, that for me, like automatically is something that I'll begin losing weight to pretty much, pretty much immediately. And then, you know, the hot weather, of course, is coming up here too.
My big eye-opener was, I was on a bike, on a 40-mile bike ride this week. And going up the hill, I was suffering. And it's not that I haven't been working out, it's just that I carried that much extra weight. So that's just that much more gravity's working against me when I'm going up the hill on a bike.
Yeah, yeah, you know, actually, when we posted our show on our YouTube account, somebody had commented, you know, Tony, don't feel bad about gaining some weight. They said, you know, what happens sometimes, because Leona's pregnant, you know, we're expecting in about two months here now. But what they said is that it's called empathy weight for a guy. And I've never heard of this before, but actually when your, when your wife is pregnant, a lot of guys gain weight with their wife, maybe it's just you eat more or whatever it is, but empathy weight.
So that's your excuse, what's my excuse?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not quite sure, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep, next week we'll have some more updates just to go over those weights again. Jake weighed in at, what was it?
232.8.
232.8 and I was at 212.4, which is still high. I think I can get down to 180. If I, if I got down to 180, I would be a lean, mean, Leona-loving machine as well.
Yeah, I think you and I have a little bit different body index because 180 would be ridiculous for me.
I haven't been 180 since high school though, yeah.
I, I know that, you know, back in the Army days, 185 to 190 was a very, very good weight for me. So I think we're probably about a 10-pound difference in our end state, so that's pretty good.
Well, we'll see what, we'll see what we can do here, but we're going to play a quick clip here. It's, you know, I think it's pretty amazing to see how sometimes, you know, the Democratic establishment, the Democratic National Party and the leaders, they change with the times, you know, they change with the seasons, you know? When President Bush was president, all you heard from the Democrats is, oh, he's a tyrant, you know, he's using the presidency against the American people, he's spying on the American people, he's promulgating unjust wars in Iraq and Afghanistan and da-da-da. And, you know, they may have been right about some of the things that they were saying.
Yeah, I agree on some of those things.
But it's like now, the revelation is coming out that President Obama is in fact just continuing the exact same policies of President Bush. And in fact, in many ways, expanding them and making them even more of an infringement on our liberties. I find it pretty amazing. And this came out, a video that we're gonna show, it's of then Senator Joe Biden. In 2006, he was on one of the newscasts talking about NSA and the spying program back then. So we're gonna play that and then we're gonna bring Sam Pierce on. Maybe not, so...
The president though said yesterday, he's, we're not listening to the phone calls, we're just looking for patterns.
Harry, I don't have to listen to your phone calls to know what you're doing. If I know every single phone call you made, I'm able to determine every single person you talk to. I can get a pattern about your life that is very, very intrusive. And the real question here is, what do they do with this information that they collect that does not have anything to do with Al Qaeda? There's a whole deal when you talk about this kinda stuff where the, under the law, they're supposed to demonstrate that they're getting rid of and not keeping any extraneous information that they pick up on wiretaps and/or pick up in sweeps like this. And the president's saying, I think I wrote down, he said, this is not mining or trolling. If it's true that 200 million Americans' phone calls were monitored in terms of not listening to what they said, but to whom they spoke and who spoke to them, I don't know, that's, the Congress should investigate this.
Absolutely, you know, no doubt, I believe that Senator Joe Biden should have a good heart-to-heart with Vice President Biden and, you know... heart-to-heart with Vice President Biden. And, you know, yes, this should be investigated. Yes, this should be looked into. And it's just amazing to see the flip-flop and the hypocrisy. And then it's also pretty revealing, I think, to just see how, you know, I feel like we just live in this world where we're really, in America, both the two parties at the, at the very, very top, the Republicans and the Democrats, they're both corrupt to the bone. And they play this game of back and forth, blaming on the Democrats and the Democrats have control, then Republicans do, and then they blame the Republicans. And there's no responsibility, there's no accountability whatsoever. Sam, do you, do you agree with us on this, Sam?
Hi, Tony.
Hello.
Uh, Vice President Biden, I, before, before I critique, I want to say that he seems like a really nice man, very genuine, and I think he loves this country. But that being said, he's a career politician and to put it bluntly, I would say he's a partisan hack. Several years ago, when President Obama was running, Tony, and you and I talked almost daily during that campaign, I remember. And I said at the time, when he selected Joe Biden to be his VP, I said, "That was one of the first examples of, this isn't really hope and change." Biden had been in a dysfunctional US Senate for 36 years. He's very much Washington establishment politics. So to me, it should shock no one that he so ardently opposed the Bush administration for collecting electronic metadata in 2006. But now has overseen those same policies, expanded them in some cases. So I think you make all great points that he's very much just a partisan politician and that's that.
Yeah, this is really what the Tea Party is all about. You really have this illusion that there's two different sides to politics out in Washington DC, the Republicans and Democrats. But when it comes to things like wars and monetary inflation and, you know, infringing on civil liberties, they both really agree on those issues. There's not a lot of difference between those two parties, even though they make it sound like it by running a couple of soundbites here and there. The Tea Party is that movement that says, "You know what? We're sick of what these guys are doing. They're taking away our liberties. We're engaging in endless wars and they're debasing our currency. And we need to stand up right now against this and promote those, those things that made this country so great."
You know, I'm, I was thinking about this earlier today and last night. I am legitimately disappointed in basically the entire Minnesota delegation that we sent to Washington DC with the exception of one person. They, Representative Betty McCollum, for instance, she was so vocal about the evils of George Bush. Even to this day, when we were debating, she would talk about, you know, "We can't go back to the Bush days and, you know, we can't go back to that." And, you know, she's silent. I haven't heard a single criticism or critique or anything to stand up for our liberty, for our privacy, for anything. And it's because the Democrats are in control. That being said, you could go down the line in our Republican leadership here in Minnesota too. I don't hear anything from them as well. Representative Eric Paulson, I don't hear anything, his opposition to the Obama policies or anything. Do you, Jake?
No, those guys are a bunch of pansies. I mean, I'm very blunt with politics and I really don't care if I offend them. They have no, you know, package. They have no balls. I mean, seriously, what they're doing out there in Washington DC, and it's not just the Democrat Party, the President and the Vice President, it's also Speaker of the House, John Boehner, a Republican. These people are growing the size of government. They're more indebted to our children. They're expanding the healthcare that's administered out of Washington DC. They've, we're in Afghanistan no longer than we've been to any other war in our history. It's just ridiculous. And now we've got this wiretapping problem. In fact, even this week, we find out this NSA whistleblower story. And we have the president and the top Republican, the House Speaker, calling this guy a traitor. The whistleblowing was the fact that they were spying on American people, that they were actually had a program in place to bring emails and web information into the federal investigation realm.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, I don't know really what we can do at this point. The only thing that I can think of that we need to do is, is we need an entire new Congress. But without term limits, with the amount of power and the amount of money that these people are able to gather up, you know, in their gerrymandered districts?
Right.
How do we change that, Sam? Do you have any ideas? Is there, is term limits the way or is it, will it ever pass?
Well, Tony, I certainly think term limits should be, I think it's difficult because you pointed out that no matter which party gets in power, they want to stay in power. And they, they use a lot of the same executive privilege that maybe the previous administration did that they campaigned against. So in the 1990s, if you recall, Newt Gingrich, Contract with America, he talked at length about term limits and the need for it. It's the last time that any politician that was in power in a powerful and influential position regularly spoke about term limits. I would like to see some of the new leaders in Congress, Senator Cruz, Senator Rand Paul. It'd be nice to see someone take up that notion, maybe introduce the legislation, because it's really fallen off the radar and we're left with Joe Biden, who I, you know, I was saying, not hope and change at all, but just four decades of career politicians.
Yeah. And, you know, that, when we played Representative Michelle Bachmann's resignation speech that she made, made a video of, it's one thing that I really admired is she did mention term limits. She mentioned how the president has term limits and, you know, she stepped down from her own post and she's giving it back to the people. And I believe that we need more and more people to do that. I don't know if, I don't know if other people are going to follow suit or not. What do you think, Jake?
Well, the funny thing is, we didn't need term limits on the president until it was abused by FDR. And he actually figured, "I'm going to go against what every other president's done and I'm going to run for a third and a fourth term." I think that's a good solution. My viewpoint here is you need all these people that have a similar belief system with guys like Tony and myself and a lot of what Sam will talk about as well, need to join a movement. I like to talk about the Tea Party because I think it's a healthy movement, but there are other movements out there. Join that movement, get involved politically and use the state. Because that's really what this is, we're a republic, where the United States, plural form, United States of America, the federal governments employed by the states. So really, the power struggle should be done at the state level. And at that, we have a better chance of changing this, other than try to bark at some bureaucrat or legislator that's living out in DC. Use your state capital.
Sam?
Another one, and I, I think the Tea Party has done a lot of wonderful work. Another one for your viewers to consider is a group called No Labels that is kind of emerging with some of the younger congressional leaders right now. And they're focusing on trying to introduce, whether it's deficit reduction or other areas, meaningful legislation that's not just the same old partisan politics. So in addition to Tea Party, I would say look into No Labels as well.
And we have to figure out ways to get past this Republican versus Democrat facade that we have going on right now. This emergence of Obama's no change policies that are basically coming through are opening up the eyes. I am encouraged to see a lot of Democrats. You see people in Hollywood. I watched some video with the Young Turks. I don't know if you know who they are. But they are starting to have their eyes open to see President Obama for who he is and for what his policies are. And we need to embrace our Democrat friends out there because in a lot of ways, we all believe in the same things. We want to have a government that's restrained, a government that's not infringing on our civil liberties, our privacy and everything of the sort. So that's where I find my hope.
And if they can agree with us on the civil liberties issue, then look at the economic liberty issue as well, which is the other thing that kind of takes people like myself and the Democrat and puts us at odds. Look at the economic issues as well and you'll see that representing the view of limited governments, the better solution.
So that's, we're coming to the end of our show. This hour just completely flew by. We had some great guests. We had the St. Paul School Board candidate Chu Vu, DFL endorsed. It was great to have him. We also had author Yazdhan Bach, who wrote the book, You'll Be My Son Joe. You should check it out. I read it this last couple of weeks. It's a, it's a great book. Next week, we're going to have Minneapolis mayoral candidate Cam Winton, who's running on the independent side of Minneapolis. And so it's going to be a good show next week. So I encourage you to tune in. We broadcast live every Saturday from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock at SCC TV Studios in White Bear Lake. And we also play on our YouTube channel, Tony Hernandez Show. Thank you for tuning in. May God bless you. May God bless America and vaya con Dios.